Tonight, we are here with the Office of Violence Prevention, Trauma Recovery, Mayor Rash J. Baraka's office, the Brick City Peace Collective, People's Assembly, NORC Public Safety. I see my partners from PUSH is here. My partners from Community Safe Zone is here. Am I missing anybody? NORC Stories, where is our proprietors in our community? I see a lot of S.I.N. outfits on. Yes, pretty sitting always. That's one of our proprietors in the community. We have parents here. You're a mama. Say it with your chest, we mamas. Okay, I'm an auntie and all of that great jazz. You ain't nobody's grandma. See, good black don't crack unless you use it. So, the objective, the objective of this event will bring together our community members, our leaders, our stakeholders to discuss the current state of public safety in NORC. We are here to share concerns and develop strategies to foster a safer city. We will address pressing issues such as violence prevention, community police relations, mental health support, and youth engagement. Our vision is a NORC where every resident feels safe, valued, and empowered. This event aspires to cultivate a unified community that prioritized violence prevention, foster trust between law enforcement and the citizens, and ensure access to mental health resources, and invest in the potential of our youth. By collaborating with diverse voices and building an actionable strategy, we aim to lay the foundation for a city that thrives on mutual respect, equity, and collective well-being. That is what the Office of Violence Prevention and Trauma Recovery, that's what these meet-in objectives and our vision is. This is our third town hall. This is the West Ward. And lucky for us, we get data from our police as well as from NORC Public Safety Collaborative. And that is sponsored by Rutgers. So, when they say crime is down, it's because they're really actually looking at numbers, not just hearsay, social media, Instagram. But like, no, the numbers that come from how many incidents happened in this area this year versus last year versus the year before last. So, when we hear that crime is down at lowers than it has been in 60 years, but then you have somebody who was attempted to be carjacked, you're like, gee, where's it happening at? But it's true, right? So, we're looking at aggravated assaults. And I'm not gonna get into nobody presentation because I know that they're gonna do an amazing job of giving it to you. I just wanted to make sure that you know why you're here, what the response is for us to be here, and what the charges of us being here. And I am Dawn Haynes Reynolds, and I will be moderating with you this evening. So, with that being said, we're going to call up our community leaders from PUSH. I don't see representation from New Direction, our police department, and I don't see our homeless services yet. How much time, what time we at? Well, that's supposed to start at 6:30. So, I guess that I can just tell y'all more about the Office of Violence Prevention. If you have teenagers, 14 and up, because I got a lot of information to give. 14 and up, 14 to 24 to be exact. We have a re-engagement center. The re-engagement center is located at the EZ Pass Building on McCarter Highway. If you have a youth that's disengaged from school, I'm talking about they may have dropped out, they may be short of credits, whatever the case is, you send them there. They have representation from the NORC Board of Education that helps find out where their credits are. They have people that are liaising between our charter school network, our public school network, and credit recovery. Send them down there. If you have students that may or may not have interactions with the police department, send them to 1017th Avenue. We do complete intakes on them. They have goals that are being set. And we have a Peace Academy happening right now on Tuesdays and Thursdays and Saturdays, where they're giving knowledge itself as well as lessons on how to make better choices. Last, this week, we had a great presentation from Ms. Denisa from PUSH, and the kids were telling me about it, and they appreciated her being there. We do alternative restorative practices. So, everything isn't just like, oh, you're in trouble for doing X, Y, and Z. For example, and I don't know about how much of this culture about these kids that y'all are, that you know are aware of, however, I'm gonna tell you how they tell me, right? And so, they had these drill rap. Anybody familiar with drill rapping? It brings your spirit from a 10 to a 1 minus, I promise you. But anyway, they talk about each other and what they do in the community. So, at any given time, you can hear a kid tell everything that's happening in their area, who might have gotten shot, and who actually did it. So, one group of kids had heard them playing a song, and it was talking about their friend. So, it could've got real violent because you're talking about somebody's life being lost. Instead, we did a mock trial. They had to present information on why, what, who, as if they were in a real court. And then, we talked about how it's affecting each other's feelings and what it is that we're doing to harm each other even through the music. And so, what it calls us to do is have a peace agreement. This peace agreement been in place for about, hmm, six years, but our children have to see it in real time so that it can be effective. So, what happens is, you're beefing, you're beefing. Y'all both understand why we talking about how to avoid it. We're doing rumor control. And y'all both have to sign the peace agreement saying y'all will not make sneak this music on the internet about each other. You will not run on your ops at school, or you will not do it at religious places. And we have credible messengers in these communities where they help balance out the conversation, where they can help minimize the casualties. And so, the police could take credit if they want to, but we know the work that we do on the other side with OVP and One Hood and New Direction that causes crime to be prevented. And so, with that being said, we have about 45 organizations associated with the Brick City Peace Collective. If your organization is not with them, you might wanna figure out how to get them with them. So, we meet once a month, and we strategize with four different levels of engagement. Transformative Justice, that's our kids, the ones that get in trouble. We know that we have partners that specialize in that work, like PUSH, like New Direction, like Community Safe Zone. We have, though, that includes mentoring as well. We also have domestic violence advocates. They're now being trained to make sure that they go out intentionally to not just talk to the victims because sometimes that's not, is helpful. Victims, most times, just want their spouses to stop abusing them. It's not so much as that they need to leave, but when they do need to leave, we have protocols in place to help them, right? And so, aggravated assaults was really high. That is something that we know was causing the number to be high. So, now, we have a concentrated strategy to lower it. So, also with the Brick City Peace Collective, you have data. So, we collect data. It's not just coming from the police. Like I said, it's not just coming from Rutgers, but it's also coming from credible messengers that know what's going on in the community. And there's a fourth one, but of course, I have Fast and Brain, so you have to forgive me in a poppin' eventually. Oh, rapid response. That's what I'm responsible for. So, high-risk intervention work. That looks like when the police shows up for a shooting, we come up when there's juvenile-involved shootings, when there is police-involved shootings, and when there is multiple people shot. What that looks like is, the police have a job to do, and we have a job to do. We don't try to intervene in their job. We ain't trying to do nothing that's going to cause their investigation to be, and that we damn sure ain't trying to be subpoenaed to nothing. So, what that do look like is, hi, are you okay? I do apologize that this is happening to you. Know the police not gonna be nice telling you you can't go over the yellow tape. However, whatever information that they have to offer, if they're giving it to me, I am more than willing to help you. Do you need a bottle of water? We show up to the hospital, waiting for somebody to hear whether their family member has made it or if they expired, and making sure that the hospital is being sensitive. And sometimes, those relationships is what literally stop people from going postal, right? So, with all of these great things that's happening, our ecosystem is not just compelled of those people that are considered professionals. We have professionalized the work with community members. So, all of our members that are part of the HRI team, they are Stop the Bleed certified, which means like if somebody, like leg is falling off because they got hit by a car, we're able to like turn the kids and stop them from bleeding out, if they get shot, stab, any of those first responder type of techniques. Narcan trained, somebody's having an overdose, guarantee you, if they're part of the HRI team, they got a Narcan kit somewhere close. And CPR certified. So, please don't choke because I do not want to try to figure out if I paid attention enough in class. So, all of that to say this, the city of NORC have resources. We are each other's resources. So, the important part of town hall meetings, community meetings, is for us to engage each other, for us to know what the community have to offer, to know what we can do to help support each other with surviving in these very trying times. I don't know about anybody else, but I've started stark piling because it do not feel comfortable with the temperature in America right now. Oh, okay. Got the right audience because I seen enough head nods. So, now that we're at the 6:30 mark, right? I'm getting closer? Okay, well, I got some more for you. So, the budget meeting for the NORC Board of Education was tonight, right? I have to be here because this is my job. That's volunteer because I get elected by you beautiful people to sit on that board to make decisions for our children inside of public schools. The only decision we make for charter schools is approving the money that they get to run. So, let's be clear, it's a difference. However, tomorrow is a school board meeting, and I will most certainly advise people who understand the temperature of NORC Board of Education and how parental involvement, community organizations involvement, violence prevention strategies have to happen in our school. Because guess who's committing a lot of these crimes? Them dead going kids. And although we understand that it starts in the home, it starts in the home, okay? And when the home fails, the village is supposed to pick it up and support. So, if we are using the village concept, what are we doing to help provide those services? I told you what the Office of Violence Prevention is doing. I know I can call Brother Sean Bay. Sir, we gotta go to a house visit because we do that as well. Excuse me, ma'am, I got your address from the police because your child was in a stolen car. How can I help you avoid him being in stolen cars? We did a meet me at the gate recently. A kid that was being literally tracked until he did something egregious enough to be sent away. He needed to understand, sir, all eyes are on you. People are either waiting for you to win or lose. You choose, just like the police got a job to do, I got a job to do. So, whatever it is that you're deciding, what is it you wanna do? How can we support you? We went, drove our way to pick this child up, making sure that he gets signed into school, making sure he checking with parole officers, seeing what other programs that we can have for him that's available, and then realizing that these children really do have oppositions or enemies that want to take their lives because they do stuff that causes this, right? So, we see that happening in real time when they're killing each other, and unfortunately, when they took the life of one of the officers. Am I at the 7:30 mark yet, 6:30 mark yet? Right there. Because that was about to get too sensitive, and I don't want nobody to go from a 10 to a 5 because of me. So, with that being said, we're gonna welcome up all of the amazing people.
We're gonna welcome Denisa Williamson from PUSH. PUSH, 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 PUSH.
Yes, you're going to use the next five minutes to talk about PUSH.
How cool.
In the West Ward.
Firstly, I'm like the loudest person in here, but I will use the mic. Hello, everybody. My name, first and foremost, I want everybody to check out my shirt first, just in case. We do sell these shirts. They do come in multiple sizes, just in case anybody needed it, just in case. You know, I love West Ward. Then it got all our little areas on the back. Gotta promote because I truly, truly, truly do love the West Ward. Hello, everybody. My name is Denisa Williamson. I am the executive director and founder of an organization that we abbreviated into PUSH. What PUSH stands for, it stands for Peers, Understanding Strategies for Healing and Help. And it was a real distinct reason why I named PUSH PUSH and why I utilized those words. I'm in a complete understanding that I was working at another organization for a long time. And while I was working at the other organization, which kind of really like focused on the Central Ward and the South Ward, I was here a resident right here in the West Ward. And I felt like the West Ward wasn't getting anything that we needed. We weren't getting any resources. People really wasn't talking about things that was going on with us. And every time you said something about the number block, people was going crazy. It's like, hey, go to number one. Hey, go over there. I'm not going to the hood and all these other kind of things that people felt about. And I started to call myself a hypocrite. How dare I go home every single night and feel like I'm safe in my community and the people that are living around me don't feel safe? And that I have a skillset to be able to make sure that other people are feeling safe and that they're bringing resources to an area that needed it. So, I decided to step out on faith and really thankful to the Office of Violence Prevention and Trauma Recovery and Brick City Peace Collective because those were the first two organizations that really believed in PUSH and gave us our first set of funding. And our first grant, we got $150,000. And Captain Laurie is here, and he'll tell you, we literally spent all $150,000 of those dollars inside of the West Ward. So, where PUSH came from is Peers, Understanding Strategies for Healing and Help is because I understood that I was your peer, that I was a peer of the West Ward, that I was a West Wardian, and it was my responsibility to not be a hypocrite and be a peer to the people that live there. And because I knew that I understood some things, and I knew that because I had went to grad school, and I have a master's in social work, and I have these, I have three undergrads, and I'm certified in domestic violence, trauma, grief. And I had all of the substance abuse, special education. I had did all of these things for the last 20 years that I had been a social worker. I said, I needed to bring that back to my community. And that's what I did. So, that was where I knew that I understood the strategies. And if I understood those strategies, that I would really be able to push those strategies into my community, and I was able to help another one while they was beginning on their healing journey. So, that's why we named it PUSH. Because we were gonna actually push into our community and bring the resources that was needed. And while I was cultivating that idea, I knew that I had an amazing relationship with people inside the West Ward. So, I took to the streets. I took to, I went to both the precincts, and I said, hey, I'm starting this nonprofit. Can I have some support from you guys? So, I started going to the precinct, and I went to both the precinct. I started going to roll call. There's very few police officers inside the West Ward that don't already know who Denisa Williamson is. I go there and I introduce myself. There's that crime scene. I call the captains. Hey, cap, I'm coming over to your crime scene. I just wanna know if it's one of my babies? Is there anything that I can assist with? Is it one of the kids in the neighborhoods that I specialize in? How can I help? If they ask me to come to the precinct, they ask me some of my youth to come to the precinct, we come up there, we collaborate, and we talk. But then, there's also some things that we do on the backside. We know that we have our young people who are also already entrenched inside of this environment that need other services. So, when, not just those services of those youth that are being arrested, once they are arrested, once they're actually going through the justice system, we go to court with our young people. Because I don't know if everybody knows it, but if a young person is being convicted of a charge, they have to go to court every 21 days until they're actually deciding to determine on what they're gonna do. Sometimes, that's overwhelming for parents. Sometimes, that's overwhelming for the youth. So, we go to the courts every time, every 21 days with that young person while he's going through the justice system, just to be able to let them know that they have somebody that's sitting on their side. Sometimes, I might sit in the courthouse and say nothing. But it is the spirit of them knowing that somebody that's from their area that looks like them is praying for them, that somebody is willing to advocate for them, somebody is willing to go to court with them. So, that was one of the other strategies that we understood that we can advocate. One of the other skillsets that we have because we work with a lot of social workers because we have contracts with Seton Hall University, Rutgers, and the College of St. Elizabeth. So, I take in college interns that are social work interns. So, other things that we do is mental health counseling, therapeutic, because I'm also a licensed social worker. And I mainly only take, unless it's a friend, like somebody's, like Dawn will call me, like, I got a South Ward kid, can you help me out? I'll be like, alright. I'd be a little annoyed sometimes because I'm like, you know what, I gotta help my babies first. But don't worry about it. I do take favors. I will help any youth inside the city. Don't just have to be in the West Ward. But we also do other things, like we do training. So, we have a relationship right now with Britt. Say hi, Britt. And that's from NORC News Collaborative. And what she's doing is, is that she's coming in and actually, after we've trained our young people being able to be inside of a program and learning how to do life skills and those other skillsets, now they're having this opportunity to go with Britt and learn videography and photography and podcasting. And then, we do very small intentional groups so that those young people are coming in and feel like they have intentional individualized services. But we also advocate as far as an educational system. For five years, I worked inside of the school system. So, I do help advocate for young people who are struggling with the IEP because sometimes it's not adequate. And sometimes, our young people are not making adequate yearly progress. And they're sometimes too ashamed to be able to tell somebody they just don't understand. So, those are some of the things that we do at PUSH. And I think, am I at my five-minute mark? Yeah, I did. That's six minutes. I'm doing pretty good. So, those are all the things that I had to say about PUSH. I could say so much more, but I'm trying to hold it to the six-minute mark as I was requested. Oh, no, I got more? Does anybody have any questions? Uh-uh. Does anybody have any questions for me today? You said, yes, ma'am.
What do you have to do to get speed bumps on shoes? Yeah, because it's a lot of crimes that be speeding past the schools and...
So, I was, well, I could tell you, and you said, there's not the Q and A time yet. I went out of sync. I thought we was gonna ask questions about PUSH. But what I can do is, when they get to it, I'll make sure that we double back to that question because I do have the answer, but I wanna be respectful to their agenda. Was there any questions for me about PUSH? Go ahead.
Oh, yes, thank you.
Oh, my goodness. So, Captain Laurie reminded me because we have two of the best events every single year. And I like, so, we do one on 15th Avenue and 18th Street every single year on 818. And my first year that I did it, Captain Laurie, I was, he was so really annoyed with me because I got my permit, and he was like, Denisa, y'all gotta be out by 8 o'clock. And then, when 8 o'clock hit, we had like eight police officers. Like, Denisa, like, you got 500 kids out here. Y'all have to move. Y'all can't keep the street blocked all day long. So, he encourages me to make sure that, like, Denisa, we was talking about like constant communication. So, he encourages me last year, so he encourages me, like, Denisa, you gotta make sure that you put your permit in early, and you gotta start shutting down today. It's 8 o'clock. I think he prayed to the rain gods because at 6:30, it started pouring down rain to make sure that we got off the block on time. But that block party that we do every single year, that's just my funny anecdote about Captain Laurie and how flexible he is. But I said that to say is that every single year when we do that block party, we had 500 young people on our block this year. We had several different tents. The police department came out. We had a trauma tent where we actually let the kids, you had mental health counseling that you can get. We had an outdoor rage room where they were able to break glass and let go of some trauma inside of the rage room. We had Seton Hall Law Clinic, so you could ask legal advice and legal questions there. We had a bouncy house, food, of course. And they did art therapy, so they were able to paint outside. We did color painting, finger painting, and we did a whole bunch. And we had about 500 young people that came out, and there was no incident. We also had our block party on Sunset where we had about 300 young people that came out with no incident. And then, we had our basketball tournament, which we are looking to put on again, which was amazing. There was a singular incident, but we had 750 young people that attended. So, we do have a large follower, young people that come to our organization, and we specialize in youth from 14 to 24. How was that? Thank you. Oh, yes, ma'am.
That's specifically for West Ward.
Ah, yes. Oh, no, no, no. I always put them on the West Ward, but all are welcome. Everyone can come. And if there's any resource, like this year, Captain doesn't know yet. I'm trying to do two blocks because I'm trying to have more. I'm trying to have more tables because last year, the community partnerships that we had at the block parties last year. This year, we're doing, actually doing MUN, July 13th, and then, we're doing 15th Avenue, 18th Street, 818. So, we're gonna still have our trauma truck out there. So, we're gonna have social workers that are gonna be there on the scene, being able to do any type of counseling or any type of interventions that are needed. We're also gonna have the outdoor rage room at both events. Of course, we're gonna have the police department. They bring the same like setup that they have here. And then, we have our community partners. So, most of the community partners came out. We had six tables on the, oh, and Sean Bay. I'm so sorry, I'm such a dizzy person. And Sean Bay actually was one of my community partners that actually helped me put that on. So like when we have like the food and then resources and we have all types. And then we had organizations that donated food back packages. We had a food pantry out there this year and I felt like there was something else. It was just such a great day and it was so many kids. And that's why we definitely need to like extend it to like at least two blocks this year. But yes, all are welcome. Yes, sir. Hi, Derek.
I'm significant about 818.
I beg your pardon?
What's significant about 818?
What's significant about 818 for us to do 818 on the 8? That's the reason, because that community, they call themselves the 8. They used to be known as, well, this kind of also dips into Captain Lowery's portion. A year and a half ago, when I first introduced myself to the police departments, I asked the police officers, the captains, what were two neighborhoods that I should hyper-focus on that they had experienced in their experience that had more interventions would arrest amongst young people? So the suggested area that I was given from that side of the 4th precinct was 15th Avenue and 18th Street. And it was 18th Avenue, was 18th and 19th Street? Yeah. So those were the two blocks a year and a half ago. So then when we started engaging with those young people inside the area, we started asking young people, what would they like us to do and what they like to see? For us to be least likely for them to be out there on hours of operations at the police department, I were asking them not to be there. So we came up with a date because they were like, they're from the 8. We decided to go out there every year on 818 to kind of symbolize the fact that we brought an intervention to the community on a day that we knew was gonna be peaceful and hopeful. And that's why we do one on July 13th on different areas inside the 6th precinct. Because we went to the 6th precinct and we asked the Captain Henderson there. He then told us that we wanted, he wanted us to hyper-focus on MUN and Sunset and Alexander. Any other questions? Hey, I'm pretty tired. Hey. Thank you. Can I get a round of applause? Thank you. Bye.
Excellent, excellent, excellent. So as we notice, all these strapping, amazing people just walked through the, hey, Sean. Her eye emoji. So, well, you know how great that is? And they just walk in because they're the ones that's next?
In turn to say, New Direction CEO.
So let me just give you a little, a little back on our New Direction partners that are coming up. They are high-risk interventionalist specialists. They were introduced to me through the idea of us reaching inside of the prison system and identifying the folks in there that can help us lower the crime out here. And so I think once they delved a little bit deeper, and I'm not speaking for them, I'm just just an outsider looking in, then we realized that some of their children are the ones causing some of this behaviors outside in the streets. And so when we talk about correcting our village, the concept of them reaching inside saying, hey, this is not okay. The people that are inside behind the wall saying, nah, we ain't doing this anymore. This is what we need you to do. We correcting what we've done wrong. It only made sense that organizations like New Direction is a part of the ecosystem. And so we, like I said earlier, we have a lot of professionals that are in the ecosystem, but not the families. And so New Direction represents the families of our ecosystem. And I'm sure Mr. Tutt is going to give a beautiful six-minute presentation on how amazing New Direction is. And we're gonna save question and answers for after the third organization and then the police department. Y'all saw his entourage. Them is the babies.
Good evening, everybody. How everybody doing? My name Khalil Tutt. And I'm the president and founder of New Direction 360. It's an organization I created for the culture, for the gang culture. And that's a gang culture that I had came from back in the day. I got locked up for a significant, you know, crime in this community that impacted it. And it impacted me and my family and it impacted my culture. So when I came home, I just wanted to show my homies something different. Through the graces of God, you know, I was able to make it out of my situation. And I found some things inside of me, tapped in with a lot of the brothers behind the wall, like Mr. Dawn said. And I just wanted to come out here and show my homies a better way. Now, I ain't wanna disown them, but I wanted to try to meet them where they at. So the work that we do, it ain't really traditional because it's hard to tap into your culture if you disown them and you, and you just say like, alright, man, F that stuff y'all doing. I ain't with that. It's a way you gotta be able to tap into them and to be able to know, like, I'm still with what you is, but I just need y'all to do it the better way for y'all people, for y'all, for y'all community, for the elders out here, the mothers. All these little homies got mothers, but they don't got a lot of fathers. So they get corrupted by the streets. They get corrupted by a lot of stuff that they see outside, like a lot of us do. And they don't know how to process that. So I wanted to start something different, which was New Direction, and show them something better that may have took notice of it, put us with the Office of Valve Prevention so they could give us some resources. Because we don't, we don't got no social workers. We don't have nobody who know how to do paperwork. We don't know how, no therapists. We need therapy. They introduced us to that with the Brick City Peace Collective and Office of Valve Prevention. And they trained us up on how to do the work in a professional way and try to bring more brothers in, like myself, to be able to do the work. But I realized a lot of the older guys are set in their ways, but they got a chance. So we here, and I get real emotional with them because we just had a situation out here. It got the pain. He wanted them. Like, and they don't understand the serious, the seriousness of what happened. And it hurt me because ain't nobody gonna be there for them. And I feel like the community gotta understand these young guys and understand the influences that's, that's hurting them out there. And it's stronger than what we out here doing. And we need to get stronger as a community and really protect these boys, man, because they're young. They don't really understand what they facing out there. And we need more people that really have some more sympathy for what they going on and them being products of their environment. And that's what New Direction is. We can understand and we sympathize with them. A lot of people probably won't because they feel like they got choices in life, but they young. They don't got no choices. People making it for them. So we gotta make some better ones for them out here. We gotta support New Direction and things we do and don't hold us accountable for our past decisions. Because we can't change our past, but we could secure our future and we could show these kids a better way out here if we have people who just believe in us and believe in me. And if people don't believe in me because of the things I did, don't hold them accountable. Thank y'all.
So we have another community organization. See if you could top that six minutes. Mr. Shon Bay from, nope. The Community Safe Zone. Thanks on y'all. I see you over there.
How's everyone doing this, this, this evening? Alright, I didn't know that I was gonna speak, but I will address this wonderful meeting. My name is Mr. Shon Bay Burton from the Community Safe Zone. We are right at 500 Springfield Avenue and we are a youth mentoring organization, right? So like this, like take for an example, in our ecosystem, New Direction deals a lot with gang culture, young people. And what we do at the, at the Community Safe Zone is we try to, our job is to take our young boys and turn them into men. So we want to develop them. We want to teach them skills. First starting off with self, self-identity, self-reliance and loving themselves. Because a lot of the issues that going on in our community and a lot of the crime that there, that is being caused in the community is because our young brothers do not love themselves. They don't know themselves. They suffer from self-esteem issues. They have low self-worth and low self-identity, right? And that's because of the failure of the school systems, the broken homes. We know all of those issues. But our issue as men is to step in and try to help these young brothers build and fortify a self, a self-worth about themselves. Because if you know better, you do better. And if you feel better about yourself, then you won't go out and kill someone or hurt someone that looks like you because you love yourself, right? So we try to identify some of the root causes of why these young brothers are, are lashing out and causing violence and crime in their, in their community. Because that, like Mr. Tutt said, they're hurting inside and they just don't know who they are, right? So once you know who you are, know where you come from, you realize your legacy and you know it would be an abomination to go against your ancestors and the people that built the communities before you and destroy your community. So that's what we do. We do manhood training at the Community Safe, Safe Zone. We do Manhood Mondays, right, where we, we teach them about what is, what is it to be a man? How to develop themselves, how to move forward with themselves in their families, in their communities. We do Turn Up Tuesdays where we talk to them about health and wellness. Because some things that we don't address, especially as men, is how we suffer from prostate cancer and hypertension, high, high blood pressure, diabetes. We're running around working and advocating, but we're not taking care of ourselves, right? So we also do, we have a boxing program where we partner with Ibn Ali's Gym over on Clinton Street. And we get them to, you know, displace some of that aggression that they have with boxing, teaching them team-building skills through boxing and teaching them how to, yes. So on Thursdays, I just got a freeze just now. Don't mind me. On Thursdays, we do, we recap what we learned on Mondays and Tuesdays as far as what goes on in our community and our wellness. And Fridays, we also have community members come in. Officer Fry has come in. Officer Ely has come in and our community partners. And on Saturdays, we have our girls program, right? Our girls program, we have on staff, we have a social worker on staff at the Safe Zone as well as a certified counselor who works for us so that we can really dig into the perils of what our young people are going on, going through and help fix them. We take them on trips. We take them out of the city. We've taken them to Knicks basketball games, the Nets games, baseball games, Yankee Stadium. We've taken them to Donnie Park, Great Adventure, trying to expand their mind because a lot of these young people only see themselves within the two-block radius in which they live, right? So we want to teach them that the world is just bigger than their neighborhood, is just bigger than the city. It's a great vast world that they can go out in and thrive in and then make us proud, representing our city and representing their families in a positive way as opposed to a negative way. So once again, we're at 500 Springfield Avenue, the Community Safe Zone. We're a youth mentoring organization. Tap in with us. Come to the Safe Zone. We also have, we do groups and we have a video game there. We have the PlayStation 5. And why does that matter? Because we tackle real serious issues with our young people, but our young people are young people, right? So we want them to be able to have a childhood, be young, be, you know, live their youth. Because we deal with such adult issues that our young people sometimes get their childhood stolen away from them. So thank you so much for putting me on the spot, Ms. Dawn. But I'm so glad that you took the time to listen to us and thanks again.
I'm back. So, thank you, good brother Shon Bay. We're gonna thank our brothers from New Direction, our sister from Push. And we are going to now call on the captain so he can give all this amazing information. If anybody knows me, know that I am an activist by nature, a humanitarian by God's word. And sometimes I don't always agree with the police. However, there are really good people that have jobs as police officers. Captain, his, his team, Sergeant, Lieutenant, that are in this room with us today. I know that if I feel like I'm being wrong, they are going to hear it. They're going to hold their officers accountable. And that is what we ask for as community members. So without further ado, I call up the captain, who just happens to be a really cool guy all the time. You gonna be home with him?
We know the police annoying. We can come along.
Go ahead.
Thank you, guys. Before I read off these numbers, and I know you guys are all here for these numbers, all excited about it. I'm gonna touch on something that Ms. Dawn said earlier about taking credit. I could honestly say that there's no one entity that could take credit for the successes that Newark has seen. This is a joint effort. And me, myself, I have grown, actually grown as, as a captain, as a police officer. When I got here three years ago and I first made captain, I would say this is my team. I'm gonna change that from now on though, because this is my team. You all my team. My team is over here. My, my team is New Direction. My team is OVP. My team is the community. So you're, you're, you're all the team. We're, we're the ones that's gonna make it work in Newark. It's not just any one entity. So I have everybody come up with me because I do want to introduce them. Like, like on the street, they're my backup, but at this level, we're not gonna call them backup. We're gonna call them my, my support. They're my support system. Whenever I'm not available, one of these guys is gonna take the calls. They, they, they're gonna give everybody the attention that they need. It's not gonna just be, oh, Captain Lowery wasn't, wasn't available. Because unfortunately though, if they don't take the call and I hear about it, I'm be yelling. So they know that. So I just wanted to introduce everybody one at a time.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Lieutenant Stevenson. I've been in the West Ward now maybe like eight months. Other than that, born and raised in the South Ward. Came out, I was in the 5th precinct. That's how I got promoted. I worked in the auto squad where I end up, we end up building a relationship with Hyundai and Kia that have done supply to clubs that we have today. My goal there was to identify everybody that was stealing cars and whatnot. So that was my goal when I was in auto squad. So I got promoted. Now that I got promoted, now I'm just pretty much the second in command in the, in the 4th precinct. So you're gonna get my business card. If y'all have any issues, concerns, feel free to call me. I help everybody out as much as I can. And once again, our CSOs are probably the best in the city. So my goal is to try to, I can't satisfy everybody, but my goal is to try to help everybody out as best as I can.
I forgot to say Push. Push is part of my team.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Sergeant Hernandez. I am assigned to the 4th precinct community substation, which is located on 17th Avenue. I've been assigned there since 2023, since taking over. And since then, I think we've done an excellent job with doing collaborations and meeting new people. With the backing of CSOs here, they'll be with you guys momentarily. And of course, Captain Lowery and Stevenson. Our main focus is to reduce crime in our specific area. We also do a lot of community engagements and a lot of community events. Under me, I have 12 officers, roughly 11 officers, and our doors are always open on 17th Avenue. We work very well with the OVP, which is right next to us. So if they have any issues or any information they need from us, we're just a doorbell or in a phone call away and they come over and we try to help them out as much as we can. So if anybody has any questions regarding what we do, feel free, we'll be here for a little bit. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Officer Fry. Excuse me, my little horse. Officer Fry, been a CSO, going on two years. I've been on the job nine and a half years. Like my captain, my lieutenant, my sergeant said, we here for you guys. We do a lot of events in the community, me and my partner. I call her my FTO. She trained me. She taught me everything. But no, seriously, we do a lot in the community and we here for you guys. Alright, at the end, me, I give out my business card. Y'all can always reach out to me or my partner.
Right. Don't worry. I'm gonna pick it up. I'll pick it up for them.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Officer Illy. I'm the community service officer on behalf of the Central and West Ward. Our office is located at 247 16th Avenue. Like Ms. Dawn stated, we do a lot of community and school engagement. We go out, we speak with the kids. We partner with her. We do a lot of things. We do book bag drives. We do coat drives. We do coffee with a cop. Anything that we can do to help, to assist. We have an upcoming big event with newest members of us, three. You could get up and state who you guys are for me real quick? Life on Threes. We're gonna do a very big Easter event for the kids as well. So we're here to help out anywhere we can. So like my partner stated, we have the cards in the back. And always remember teamwork make the dream work. That's it.
Alright, thank you, guys. So let's get to these numbers. Before I start reading off these numbers, last time I ran these numbers off, somebody in the crowd almost killed me because it didn't go according to the Rutgers numbers. So I want to start off by giving you my area. I think that's where the misconception came in, where Rutgers might have did a West Ward, which is the 6th precinct and the 4th precinct. So I'm the 4th precinct captain and my area is from Avon to 12th Ave and from Grove down to MLK. That's my area. And these, this is what these numbers represent. I'm, I'm happy to say we are down, auto theft, we're down 7%. And these, I'm sorry, these numbers are from same time last year. So from January to March, whatever, 2024 compared to 2025. So auto theft, we are down in the 4th precinct. We're down 7%. Theft, which is like your package thefts, you're leaving your, your purse in the shopping cart at ShopRite. Somebody swipe it. That's thefts. You're down four, we're down 14%. Your theft from autos, that's where everybody leave their car doors open. And then you got the guys, crime of opportunity, they come, they pull on your door handle and they, they see it's open and they'll go in there. That's a theft from auto. We're, we're actually down 19%, which is, it's a tough number because trying to get everyone to close their door, lock their doors in the 4th precinct is tough. I don't know why. I guess we feel safe. We've got burglaries. We're down a big, big number. We're down 35%. And our robberies were actually down 65%. The reason for that big increase is because last year, beginning of the year, we got hit hard. There was a group and they were going around the whole city, hitting up the city. But we took, we were there to take them off the street. Number that is, is down also, but it's not really a win for me because it's two compared to six last year. It's our, it's our murder rate and it's down 67%. But still not a win for me. I'm not taking that. I want to see zero in that, in that 2025 area. But you know, we, we got two, so we're, we're working on that. Our ag assaults are the only thing we see up, which is 12%. But that's, it's not to explain or make an excuse. It's basically, ag assaults consist of, it does consist of the shootings that happen on the street, but it's also more the domestics. So we have a domestic in the house. Somebody get choked, somebody get cut, domestic-wise, those are considered ag assaults. We are up 12% with that one. And that's, that, that wrapped up, wraps up the number portion. And I guess we'll do the Q and A later. Okay. Yeah, come on up. You want to sit there and answer questions? Come on. You want to sit there and beat me up? Come on up.
No, no, no. I just, I do have a question.
Shon Bay?
Kind of directed and also because we're all in the same space. Like you said, one, the Office of Valve Prevention just released the RFQ for domestic violence, which is for the whole city. What would be something that a community partner could do or bring to the 4th precinct? Because part of that is DV. And we don't have anything that specialized in the West Ward for DV. What would be something that would be of assistance for that?
So we do, we, we, we do referrals. We have some, we do referrals with OVP in, in the morning. And it's the shiny Baraka Center. You got something? Come on, come on. They actually, they, they take the referrals and they'll bring the victims in to speak to them. So, so we're, we're doing our part with that. It's the, the part we're trying to prevent, we're trying to prevent the incident from repeating, which, which is, as you know, domestics are tough. We got a question for you. That's for you.
I could tell you I'm gonna be out.
Oh, I thought it was a bird.
I thought that was a, I'm, I'm here to tell you, I was gonna be out. That's not a bird? Well, I'm standing with people with guns, so.
Our kids in this area have experienced some terrifying issues when trying to cross the street. We have no speed bumps. There's only, I think, one.
To come to school and a car went around? No, thank you. A car went around and almost hit my child. So knowing this, why aren't we trying to take some preventive measures?
So, so in order to do speed bumps, you need to help me out. So in order to do speed bumps, there's different steps that have to be taken to go through the engineering department. And so you also, they have to come out and do their study. And then it'll, just to get the speed bumps done, preliminary study, you gotta show certain distance away from an intersection. It can't be in front of certain businesses.
So if you're doing a study from three years ago versus what's actually happening now in the community, that's not beneficial to us. Needless to say, I work in other towns and not only do they make sure the kids have speed bumps, there are adult crossing guards. We don't even have a crossing guard in your block. And these are kids fifth to eighth grade. These are not high school students, you know? So we're talking about safety and protecting the youth. We don't want our kids hit trying to come to an education.
Are you talking, I'm sorry. I'm, I'm just so I can understand better, because maybe I missed it. Is it, is, is at this school, with this particular school, we have no crossing guards? We have no speed bumps?
There are people flying up and down the street during school hours. There's only stop signs, which people blow the lights. So you think a stop sign is really gonna, you know, stop someone?
So, so this is not by no means an excuse. By no means an excuse. The city of Newark is having a real tough time right now hiring crossing guards. We, we are so short. It, it's insane. I think what it is, what we found out was the, the background check. They, they, it's different, I guess it's so high that nobody gets past. So basically, we gotta do better. Definitely gotta.
Yeah, so why aren't we trying to like mimic what other towns are doing, our neighboring towns? What are they doing? It gotta be something that they're doing that we could implement here. That'd be beneficial to us as well.
So the city of Newark, our original contract with the police department and the crossing guard, everything goes through them as far as. everything goes through them as far as the background check and where the, where the crossing guards are dispatched.
So unfortunately, charter schools was not a part of that conversation because charter schools just came to Newark. So however.
Are we revisiting this?
Huh?
Are we gonna revisit this now?
We are revisiting it now. We can tune into the roundtable with the NCST on that bi-weekly Tuesdays and they talking about this specifically because now this is legislation, right? This is state legislation. This isn't like our city. Most places have volunteer crossing guards. The contract that the city has with the Board of Education and the Newark Police Department is not that. These people have to be background checked and what the pushback on the community is, well, they're crossing kids. And unless they're like pedophiles or something else, why can't somebody who used to sell drugs cross kids across the street? And so in the meantime, we've created an alternative that has been extremely helpful, which are safe passage people. And safe passage people are from either the Newark Community Street Team and they get contracted through the charter schools. So y'all can most certainly reach out to Newark Community Street Team or the Office of Violence Prevention and Trauma Recovery to request those or do a contract with third-party organizations where you guys can pay for the school, not your parents.
I was gonna say that, but they're not, don't, New Direction do safe, there's a lot of other.
New Direction do safe passage for the Great Oaks down there.
Shabe does safe passage too.
And so we do safe passage at lab. We have some at University High School. And this also helps mitigate the fights that happen at the school because crossing guards ain't bringing up no fights. But some of our safe passage, high-risk interventionists can and they mediate it and they figure out with some of them young folks that came in here, who is beefing and how they can diffuse it prior to. So I hope I answered your question because I most certainly don't want to be dismissive of it because I feel you 100%. So that is the background history of it.
In the meanwhile, I'm not using this, but in the meanwhile.
No, she needed for this.
Oh, okay. So in the meanwhile, one of the things, like also because I did a lot of advocacy work when I was, my daughters went to Team Academy when they were in middle school and I actually helped them start the first Parents Association that actually goes through KIPP schools now. So one of the things, just as a concerned parent, if those are not options that are really like value to you, some of the other things, and I'm sorry to say this right in front of Captain Laurie, some of the things that we did then was to push back onto the police department. Like we actually got after school for that block where my school was at, so we were able to bring in crossing guards. We had the block blocked off and then parents had to walk in to pick up their children and partner with the police department. And so we were able to get crossing guards at that location. Then on top of that, like a lot of that onus goes back onto the school. Because just like even if the school doesn't give, I'm so sorry to say this, but even if the school doesn't give safe passage or pay safe passage, the school can actually hire themselves people to do crossing guards in front of the school. And then my last thing is, is that like I say, that more, people are more likely, young people are more likely and people see more people. So another thing that we did when I was, my daughters was in middle school, is that we insisted that the parents who were able to, we made shifts and parents actually stood outside. The more eyesight, the more people that are actually seeing these things, is least likely for people to do these things. So I would encourage like you have, have parents come together and have 10 parents outside standing out and helping the school with dismissal because then that means that the more, and that brings back to the community and puts the onus back on the community and less on like legislation while you're getting those things to go through legislation. It's just a suggestion from me. Thank you.
I could add to that also. Really do appreciate you coming out here and voicing your opinions. It means a lot to me. So I'm not gonna just say, I'm gonna stand back and let everybody answer the questions and we're not gonna do anything about it. What we're gonna do is I'm gonna come back. I'm gonna come back tomorrow and visit with the school and find out where the issue lies. And even we could do something temporary until, like he said, we get something final here, we can do something temporary. Because I seen a lot of charter schools also, they have the cone set up and we'll do something. And this, I don't see this being a big issue to, at least for an hour in the morning, an hour in the afternoon. So we'll, I'll definitely look into it with the school and we'll set something up. I promise. Before you leave here, just make sure you get contact information and get exchanged with Officer Ely so we can get back to you, update you.
Counselor, I'd also add that we did work with Councilman Kelly last year to really start the traffic addition. And they have come out and done some observations, which is why we were able to at least get the rumble strips. We had nothing to be first started. So there is some progress, but I appreciate being able to come out and also get raised on ours. Because in the morning, Officer Day, Officer Day, he goes through and moves kids across the street. We have kids coming from every direction. Kids going to other places. So we do try to do our part to make sure that there's safety, but we have started that traffic addition and Councilman Kelly has been working with us to try and get us some additions.
So I'll definitely follow up with the councilman and then I'll be back tomorrow, me and Officer Day and we'll go through what we can do for a temporary fix until everything gets worked out. Thank you.
Hello. Good evening, everyone. My name is Asadi Easterling. I would first like to start by introducing my boss and mentor, Zakaya Towns, who's a court-appointed advocate. I want to start my portion of comments by saying that this is strictly from the perspective of somebody who is a community member and from the perspective of those whose lives aren't flexible enough or they're not available to be behind the scenes to know the specifics of what's going on. So these are just questions from the perspective of people who kind of have wool over their eyes. I'm gonna put it that way. I want to start by saying that I'm pretty sure as a community, everyone appreciates the efforts being made to create changes and start to adapt to the issues that we're seeing. But as someone who is closer to the generation and age group of those individuals who are adding to a lot of the problems now, I just feel as though, from the outside looking in, that consequence is a big issue in causing change and them actually feeling like they're paying for the stuff that they're doing. As sad as it is, because I don't think in no lifetime of mine that this should be the norm, but I don't think kids are afraid of going to jail anymore. I don't think they're afraid of being locked up. They're not afraid of being on probation. Stuff like that is cute to them because you get on Instagram and you see videos of them dissing each other. I'm gonna speak from very realistic terms, dissing each other, starting with each other, instigating at probation offices. Y'all are recording each other coming out of the probation office, laughing at each other. Oh, he's, he's scary. He not on that. He's, you're literally in trouble right now. You're here because you're trying to stay out of the situations that you're getting yourself in and you still seem to not have any remorse, any sense of reflection for what you've done. So part of what I think should go more into rehabilitation instead of the luxuries, I'll call like the PS5s, the programs, the community days. I think those are more so helpful for the younger generation, children that are still in middle school age that are still moldable as much as possible. But as far as the children that are 16, 17, 18, that feel like they've been doing stuff on their own, feel like they're grown and I could do this because my uncle and my brother, they need different courses of action as far as learning from their mistakes. Because after a certain point, you can't keep calling it a mistake anymore. You know the people that are older than you and your family did it and they went to jail for those 15, 20, 30 years. You grew up and you still thought it was okay, not only because nobody in the home was teaching you properly or your community stopped being that village to raise you, but because you just don't think anything is gonna happen to you. Or I'm gonna go to jail, they gonna keep me in jail for three months and I'm gonna come home and I could go be a part of this program and they gonna let me play the game, they gonna get me back in school. I'm gonna get to go back in school and half-ass and not actually do my work and life just goes on.
Well, let me just, let me unpack a little bit of that question. Before we do a lot more, let me just unpack a couple of parts of that question.
I do not disagree. I'm agreeing with you 100%.
Let me just make.
Not necessarily a question, yeah. More so observation for now, yeah.
Before we move on from there, let me just educate with some things out of the ecosystem about that. Number one, a lot of times we fail to remember, and we're talking about a couple of things that your statement was. And that's some of the things that we do tackle, especially me, because I work with that demographic from 14 to 24. One, there's three stages to diversion when you talk about a young person being arrested. The first phase, once they, when they're arrested, is unfortunate. They can only be detained for six hours. That's the state rule. If you're arrested and you're juvenile, if you're not remanded, they can only hold you for six hours. After six hours, someone has to take them, pick them up. They cannot be in custody. That's the state legislation. And then on top of that, once they're released into an adult's care, they have to go to court every 21 days. So the legislation isn't written for them to have a consequence right yet. And that's one of the things that needs to be fought against because they shouldn't only be remanded. And then also Essex County, which is really hard, is that even if, even if they say like the city, the village says, okay, you know what, there's nothing that we can do, this person needs to be remanded, they need some other type of recourse. Essex County is the only county in all of New Jersey that only has three transition housing beds. So if a young person doesn't get picked up, there's only three beds at YMCA they can go to and actually stay. So there's no, we don't have the funding or the resources right now to even start in that first part, to even teach them that.
Thank you. Hold on. Okay. I want to say thanks to everybody just for even having us here to listen, but I really appreciate what you're saying. For me to sit here and hear you speak that intelligently means a lot to me. And I know you've been with me for 10 years. I have 10 businesses in the city of Newark. I'm in the worst areas of Newark and I love the city of Newark and you know that. I hire kids from the age of 14 to the age of 21. 13, to be exact. She's one of my managers. She's my manager on Springfield Avenue. And this is the fifth carjacking in front of my business. Now, I'm gonna speak realistically because I'm on both sides of the fence. I love the cops. I love the detectives. I love the sheriffs. I love all of that. I pray for them every day. I love what they do. But the kids, I love the kids too. I'm a court-appointed advocate for the city of Newark with Judge Wayne Forrest for 19 years. This is personal to me. My sister, she's Dawn Haynes. I really wasn't gonna get up there to talk because she told me not to get up. I wasn't gonna get up. I have a detective sister also and I'm also an advocate for the city. So I'm on both sides of the fence. Kids gotta know right from wrong. That's just a fact. I don't want to hear, oh, kids need, we gotta, no, 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 no. Some legislation gotta be changed. I'm gonna write it in. Whatever money I got, whatever couple of millions I got, I'm gonna write it in. Legislation, change laws. I pay taxes here in this city. Do you hear what I'm saying? Do you hear what I'm saying? I respect their jobs. If it wasn't for Officer Fry, Officer Ely, the lieutenant, I wouldn't feel safe. Did you see the video, what happened to me when I got in the car on Saturday? You didn't, you don't know.
It clearly, like it's visibly affecting you and being around her for so long. This is the first time I've seen a situation change her behavior.
But hold on. I can't get out of character because of y'all, because of the business, because of the city. But I'd be willing to go from zero to 10. At that point, I'm not thinking about it as a kid. Do you understand what I'm saying? At that point, I don't care if it's a kid because y'all life matter too. What about y'all life? Y'all gotta get in these uniforms every day. Y'all gotta go home to y'all families just like us. I don't want to hear, it's a kid, it's a kid. Yeah, New Jersey is a state that want a plea deal. I worked there for 18 years. You take a plea deal, you gonna sit and you gonna get out. They don't want to take it to trial. Do you hear me? It's a kid. Everybody keeps saying it's a kid. Charge them as an adult. Make them stand accountable for their crimes. Do you hear what I'm saying? I don't even want to talk no more. You finish.
And part of what she mentioned as far as, in a nutshell, I think it kind of falls under the umbrella of it gets to a point. As community members, they keep coming up as new generations of children that are still continuing these issues, but for us, it's like, okay, it's been 20 years, it's been 30 years, it's been 40 years and nothing's getting better. So it's like, as far as us being a community, how long are we supposed to wait before we are allowed to stop caring about the fact that these are children committing these crimes? These are, this is somebody's baby. This is like, it's reality and it is sad, but after a certain point, it's hard to be empathetic. It's hard to take faith and have, you know, security in these programs when it's like, okay, y'all are giving it to them, but they're walking out of the door and they're going right back to the stuff that they were already doing. And that's kind of where I'm touching at as far as actually learning from their consequences and feeling the consequences is not sitting with them, is what I feel. People I've gone to school with, people that I grew up with as kids, I see a plethora of people, boys, girls, that I grew up with in school that aren't my age because they were murdered. A girl that I graduated 8th grade with, didn't even make it to her senior graduation because she thought it was cute to be in gangs, in the streets, doing stuff like that. There are no consequences. They're not afraid. And it's like, why should we have to keep having funerals? Why should we keep have to having to bury our cousins and our friends because they're not getting it? It's frustrating and it's sad and it becomes a fearful thing because as people who own businesses and people who work in businesses, what are we supposed to rely on, a program? When we're leaving work and people are running down on us and threatening us, when we're at work and people are coming in, committing sex crimes in front of children, it's like, what are we supposed to do? After a certain point, programs aren't cutting it anymore for the community. It's helping y'all because y'all see the behind the scenes, y'all get to touch with these people, speak to them one-on-one. They don't have the respect for us that they have for y'all. They'll act one way in front of y'all because they know I can get this, this and that out of this or this, this and that can happen. They quite frankly, don't care once it becomes their peers. And it's sad and it is scary. We're women. We're black women and we're in a community and in a system that's already been set up for us to fail and for nobody to care. So it's like, after a certain point, it does feel like that's what's happening, that nobody's caring, that nothing is happening because why is it always, oh, well, we have to wait for this, we can't do this yet because of this, this and that? I don't know how to say it without making it seem like I'm discrediting you guys' efforts because I know there's only but so much you can do. It's like a, it's like a tree. You guys, the Essex County Police Department, the different wards that we're in, they're little leaves that are part of this whole tree that needs to be cut down. And it's like, the longer it grows and the more the leaves start to fall, it just diminishes us as people. It makes us feel like it's not worth it. It makes us feel like we have nowhere to go. And I also feel like that fuels the urge to do some of the stuff that they do. The resources come in too late because kids don't know how to express themselves. They don't know how to say that they need help. The families that they're raised in, they don't allow them to express themselves. A lot of kids have mental illnesses, learning disabilities that force them, not even allow them, but force them to be closed off in these emotional boxes where it's like, oh my God, this, this and that is happening to me and I'm going through this emotion, this feeling, and I have no idea what to do because I don't even understand what's going on in my brain. And in that part, I'm speaking from experience. A lot of anger in kids comes from misunderstanding. And I feel like if that understanding was there early on, if it was caught fast enough, and I guess that would partially play in the resources that are available in elementary schools, it would stop a lot of the chain reactions that come as they grow up in, you know, society.
Right. But in the communities, specifically Newark, Urbiton, East Orange, what they are trained to do is, if you know something, don't say shit. What you know something, you're supposed to tell, but then you're gonna become a snitch. It's only if it's your kid. Do you hear what I'm saying? If you know something, you say something. Do you understand what I'm saying? If something happened to you and I see you laying on the ground, I supposed to say something. But people ain't gonna come say nothing because it ain't their kid. Do you got what I'm saying? It ain't personal to them. That's why. It's not a community no more. Don't say nothing. You gonna be labeled a snitch. If it was your kid, when you want somebody to tell, I'm gonna turn the mic over and we gonna get out of here because we gotta go to work.
Listen, I'm 100% in agreeance with you. There's no repercussions. So we gotta work on getting that legislation changed for real.
Right. And I just wanted to add some to the context, right? Oh, alright. Well, pardon me. I go by the name Eight Degree. My name's Sadi. I'm also the co-founder and CEO of New Direction, right? And we are a high-risk intervention organization with my brother Tutt and the rest of the youth that came up. I'm the other half of it. My standpoint is I handle the day-to-day logistics parts of it, right? Like the backdoor stuff. But just coming from, like I understand everything that y'all saying, right?
You was arrested before?
Of course.
You committed a crime before?
Absolutely.
You saw a crime before?
Absolutely.
Did you tell?
Why would I?
Exactly. So I'm asking you these personal questions, because I need to know, you saying you represent New Direction?
That's right.
So that mean you gotta come with me straight?
That's right, that's the only way I know how to be.
So if you see something, you're supposed to say something, but that ain't what happened back then.
Right.
Personally. You get what I'm saying?
Right.
You shushed, right? You shushed.
That's right. Because it's, it's a code of ethics.
It's a code of ethics. But that ain't a code of conduct, that is a street.
That's right.
We talking about realistic life here.
That's right.
I work for a judge, I gotta stand here, I gotta take an oath.
Mm-hmm.
You get what I'm saying?
Understood.
So you're talking about a street code.
That's right.
I'm talking about people who gotta make it home to their families.
Both sides gotta make it home. That's not, that's not true.
But there's a court of law, there's ethics, there's conduct, there's rules, there, there's everything.
Right.
So if I see something, if I see a kid hurt, I gotta tell.
Okay.
You ain't gonna do that.
I'm gonna tell, I'm not gonna tell law enforcement. I have, we have a whole noth-
I'm gonna tell law enforcement.
But that's you, though. It, it, listen, a community makes up of multiple different people and multiple different lifestyles. It's not just the streets, it's not just the working class, it's not just the homeless class. It's the community as a whole. And our, our job is to learn how to operate as a whole. And I feel as though everything that our youth is, is because what we are lacking to show them. I don't care, my, both of my daughters, let's say, my sixteen-year-old and my, and my six-year-old, wherever they become good or bad, is because of the foundation, um, it's because of the example.
That's not true. I got two, I got two sisters that's detective.
Right.
I got an advocate sister, advocate, uh, Dawn.
Right.
I'm a court advocate.
Right.
I got two brothers in jail doing life.
Right.
Right?
Mm-hmm.
But let me tell you something. I would, I would tell them the first chance I would've got.
Right.
Because if you took somebody's life.
Right.
Somebody could take yours.
That's right.
So guess what? I ain't know, I'm, I'm on the right side of the, the right side of the fence, it's for me to tell the truth.
Right. But that's your right side, that's not the next person's right side.
It's whoever, if she do something, she going out.
Right, but that's-
She getting out of my business.
But that's what I'm saying.
If you do something, I see you, tell them.
Right.
That's it.
And I have to respect that. I can't, I can't expect, I can't hold you to the same standards as I hold my men that's out in the street, because you're not from the streets, I'm not gonna hold you to that.
But if we talking about doing right?
Right.
There's only one side. It ain't no-
No, truth is only one side, right, right is objective.
No, no, it's one side.
Okay.
It's one side.
Understood.
It's the right side. The right thing to do is what you know.
Right.
If you know something, you tell.
Okay.
Tell the truth.
Right.
The whole truth, nothing but the truth. So help me God, when you go into a courtroom, just say, raise your right hand.
Right. But only thing I'm saying is, I hear the problems, and I just want to work towards solutions. And I'm just trying to put some solutions on the table.
Okay.
Right, that's all I'm trying to offer. Whether it's inside of here, I could pull up to y'all business, and it, it don't have to come out today. Maybe I could pull up for a, a week in a row, a month in a row, whatever it is, I want y'all to walk out of here and say that y'all got something done, and that y'all was heard. That's it, but I have, I, we got mass solutions.
The way you see, the way, what you think a solution is?
That's right.
Because when you, um, what is that?
Yeah.
You said something along the lines of, that's the street ethics.
Right.
It's not general ethics, that's basically what we were hitting at. There's ways that you handle street interactions, and there's ways that you handle general interactions.
That's right.
Do you not feel like community issues and community solutions are better made for everyone?
Right.
Or based on the role that you play in the community, because
I believe that we need to-
The way that translates in my head, when you say that's the way you would handle that, because you're not in the streets.
Right.
Uh, to me, that says that you're saying, okay, well, if you're in the streets, I'm gonna teach you this, 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 and that way to be a better part of the community, but if you're not in the streets, then I'm gonna teach you this, 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 and that, instead of it being, everybody needs to act the same.
Right.
And be cohesive with each other, so that it's a flow.
Right. I just believe, I just, I just believe that our end goal has to be the same. Our destination, getting there could be different. That's right. And, and my, and my job is, is not my solution, it's our solution. That's all, we just want to meet in the middle. However that looks, we just want to meet in the middle. That's all. If that's fair enough for y'all, that's, that's more than fair enough for me. Uh, not only get, not only would I bring myself, I'd bring my partner, I'd bring my team, bring Dawn, we could bring Denisha, and we could really sit down and really find something. That's it, and that's all y'all gonna get.
We want realistic.
That's all, that's something we gonna offer.
You don't want to pacify your patty-taking.
No, 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 no.
No, 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 no.
Ain't nothing about, yeah.
No, I know, you better hear me out.
Yeah.
Ain't no patty-taking.
Right.
Covering up, brushing under the rug, ain't no none of that.
Right.
Because when they walk out, when they leave any of my businesses, they don't walk out with men.
That's right.
And I hire men.
That's right.
They gonna stand tall, strong, strong and firm.
That's right.
And what they see, they better tell.
That's right.
And I got cameras, twenty-four-hour footage, video, and I rewind and I'm gonna play back.
Right.
But, what I am gonna do is safety first.
Right.
Now, you just said, you see how you just said, there's street ethic?
Yes, yes ma'am.
There's street ethic? Yeah, there's street ethic.
Right.
You know there's street justice too, right?
That's right.
There's both.
That's right.
There's justice with the law, and then there's street justice.
That's right.
So we ain't gonna act like we gonna confuse the two.
Right, and we ain't gonna act like we could have that conversation in a second.
No, I'm, I'm gonna act like I could have that conversation, because you don't want it, I wanna have it, because it's realistic here. So we know that. But it, it is the police.
Okay, yeah.
This is real, this is realistic here.
Yeah, good.
Joy!
No, the sister here, I'm sorry.
Good.
The, the sister here.
They got me working out here.
I can't project. It, this is better, okay, thank you. Uh, I have a question about your website and transparency with public meetings. I'm with Newark Documenters, and I've attempted multiple times to call different offices to figure out when the public safety meetings are, and I know they're divided by wards, but you have to, like, dig on Instagram and Facebook to find them. And the last time the website was updated, I think it was before twenty-twenty-two. So, sorry? The, the police department. Yeah. That's an easy one, okay, because I've been trying to find some answers.
That's an easy one.
Okay.
Officer Fra is gonna come up, and he's gonna give you the, uh, link for the Newark Public Safety website.
There's nothing on there.
It's on Facebook and Instagram, we post our, all our meetings.
But is, is there a plan to post it, like, on the calendar, like, on your website? Because you have to dig on social media, not everybody has.
So what happens is, when we set a meeting up, it actually goes out to our P I O, and the P I O posts it on the website. It, it happens like, maybe a week or two before.
Yeah, I see, what I'm saying, is there any plans to update your website, so it's more central for those who don't have social media? That's my question.
I don't think, I don't know about that, but I'm also, if you, if you, they also email it to you, you can get on their mailing list.
We, we, we could definitely email it to you, but I don't, maybe break the question down a little bit.
Okay, so I'm part of Newark Documenters, so we're just, we, uh, reach out to different Asian-
When you say centralized the website?
Right, so your website has not been updated since twenty-twenty-two, like, the Newark Public Safety website. When you click on event calendar, it says no events. I'm asking when that will be updated.
Okay.
Because I understand it's on social media, but not everybody has social media.
Right, right, right. Yeah, so we post on the website itself, so like, if you're on Instagram and you're a friend, it'll come up on the website, website itself.
It doesn't come on the website, it comes on the social media.
It's not coming, you know, you just type in the book.
Oh, you're talking about the Newark Public Safety website, oh my God. That's actually a good question, so I'm gonna get with the P I O and find out why that's not happening. Uh, get, make sure we get your contact information, so we could update you on that. But I, I see what you're saying, not everybody's getting, now, I was- It's going for a minute.
But it's not accurate for every ward, correct?
No, so every, every precinct does it, their meeting's different.
Right, so that's why I'm asking if, if there's plans put on the website, because a lot of community members-
I like, we'll definitely voice you. Oh, we got, Dawn got something.
Told you I got your bag. Listen, the I T department right now is currently working on the, the Office of Violence Prevention and the, um, Public Safety's, uh, website. So that when you hit a link, you're able to see all of the data that they present at these meetings, you're able to see our partners, you're able to see all of the organizations that's associated with us, with hyperlinks, and all of the things that go along with that.
What's the timeline, do you know?
Nope, the city government.
Oh, but I would like to just say, to make you feel a little bit better. They, they hired somebody recently, the person that they have known is very effective.
Okay.
So I see, I know what they're saying.
Here is Joy.
I ain't need the mic. I just had a, first of all, my name is Joy Black. First of all, I just want to thank everybody that's in the room. Um, the work that they do, it, it, sometimes it might go unnoticed. Um, and the people that are in the room, the advocates, Denisha, um, Dawn, O V P T R, um, Chambly. Did I say her name right? Um, the work that you do at the community zone with Kirby and everybody. This is hard work, this is not, this is not easy work, and it's a daily thing, and it's more people that do the work. Even I do the work, you probably don't even know who I am. Um, but one of the things that I do want to mention to some of the people who do the work, my son came to me the other day, and he's twenty-three, good kid, never been in trouble, thinking about law enforcement, uh, maybe, maybe not, I don't want to be a snitch, blah, 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 blah. I think we need to tap into some of the good kids, right? Because it's getting to a fact, my son said to me, mommy, I can't find a job, and when I go to these programs, the first thing they ask me, have I been convicted of a crime? He's a good kid. So why do I need to be convicted of a crime to get into a program or to get into something? Right? So I think that we need to, I understand that we're reaching out to the kids that are in trouble. But we don't want to lose the good kids either. I'm a single mother. For twenty-three years, I kept my kid out of trouble. That's not easy. It's not easy. So let's not lose the kids that are doing good, while we're focusing on saving the other kids that are not doing good. That's my only concern.
Thank you, that's a great point. So our organization at the Safe Zone, uh, we deal with all, all aspects of the spectrum, right? So we do deal with young, young brothers who have never been, um, victims of violence or have never been perpetrators of violence. We've sent in the last year at least six young men to Gateway University, which is an online college, right? They were, like, they graduated high school and didn't know what they wanted to do. Um, and we've enrolled them into Gateway University, six young men in the last twelve months. We, we enroll, we helped to enroll three young brothers into Essex County College, and another five into Saint Elizabeth University, right? Because we push education, right? We want them to have, develop the skills that they can use to be, um, strong young men, right? Um, so our program, there are programs that you don't have to have a criminal record or juvenile record or been a perpetrator of, of crime and violence in order to be in our program, because it's a mentoring program.
I just see the direction that we're going. When you look at Instagram, when you looking at Instagram, and I, I love New Directions, I love Tutt, I love Dee, but the vision is like, okay, we're taking care of the gang members. But what about the kids that's not?
Okay, so this is why-
So that's the, that, I'm in it. So you can't tell me anything different, that's the, that's the vision, that the kids of Little League, kids are coming to me like, do I need to be a victim of a crime, or do I need to commit a crime to be able to be a part of this circle? Right? Because they want to be a part of, my son looks up to eight, he loves eight. He loves eight. So I don't want him to think that in order to be wicked, he gotta commit a crime to chill with eight.
Right. So, so, so you ju-
You gotta change your focus.
So you just said, you can't, so, so that's what you said about eight. I'm telling you, our organization, you don't have to be in that, in that area, right? It's about changing the culture. This is a cultural thing, right? So the music pumps crime and violence, misogyny, drug use, um, crime. So, it's, it, this is not, this is not a Newark problem, right? It's a statewide, it's a national problem. And when these officers say that crime is down, it is, but it doesn't mean that crime just stopped. Right? There's still crime going on, but it is in fact down, sixty-year low, right? But it's a cultural thing, and we need programs. Because there's been tons, hu-, thousands of young brothers and, and sisters who benefited from programs. Um, recidivism is at an all-time high, right? And programs is what help them, because, because young people don't have stable homes, right? They don't, they may not have a father at home, they may not have a mother, they may be raised by their grandmother. So these mentoring programs are the programs that walk them into the universities, walk them into the C D L jobs, walk them into colleges and, and full-time gainful employment. They need us to help them, because we needed someone to help us, right? So, so, eh, it's, it's, it's like, like the, the captain and the sergeant said, like, we're all working together, in, including the community. It takes a village, right? So, so I get what you're saying about, um, that image, but that image is not just here, it's an unfortunate image that's taken tons of our young people to a negative, uh, direction.
It's an unfortunate image, but it's a true reality, and I think what you're saying, I'm very, very quickly asking my, because I'm not a kid on the house, I also have my cell, I have my grandmother, and my neighbor. The reality is, I saw a Facebook or Instagram post one day, and it said, this young man just graduated, let me see how many lives he could live for this. Right? Then you see somebody with a video, we're talking to a woman, oh, with two thousand dollars sneakers on, and then you see a baby crying. So at the end of the day, I think what it's hoping is, what it's just, you know, what it wants is, is that we highlight these programs. That these programs use the same mechanism for marketing as the programs who are assisting the people who are already in trouble, use the same marketing tactics and pour the same amount of money and the same amount of support in the, in the program that supports the good people as well. It is, we do as a society, that have a habit of meeting people where they are, right? But those attention is almost like when after eleven or thirteen. So I know what it is that moms, moms gotta pay attention to the ones that, they always say that, hey, we're people helping you. Well, this is to be more attentive. So I gotta get the attention that I do, because I, I'm supposed to be okay, right? But that's not always the reality, a lot of times it's a facade. And that's why sometimes we go according to the facade, there's those good children that end up going towards the wrong thing. Somebody addresses them, nobody supports them.
And nobody's helping, and nobody's helping them. Nobody's helping them.
So like, somebody, they're looking at it.
And I gotta work.
Bring me to the scene, so, come on, we'll help them, right?
I don't think everybody's doing anything wrong, like, everybody is appreciative of every effort. You can give attention to the good, the bad, the ugly, everything. But like, the same token, we hear it most silent, when it comes to the fact of saying that the good people don't get a gun prize. Our officers who are standing up here, don't get a gun prize. But there's people who have more money, bigger goods, you guys can't say, you know, we're more hustling, but they still be up every day, put two legs on their hands and walk out and make a sacrifice for us. So I think it's just a, no, I don't think it takes anybody to say, give back to it. I think it's a mother sharing her passions about what her experience is, I think it needs to be received and liked. Like, nothing to say about it, do something. I think it needs to be received, their life. Like, nothing to say about it. Do something. Don't say that about it. So my opinion is like, what they got planned here, it should be on some, sister, here's my number. Where is that guy's son? Tell him to contact him. Well, where can I meet him at? I think that's where we're at at this point. We're not really about talking about it back and forth. It's more so about the actions. Let me show what you. Who gonna step up and meet some of these women and these kids and stuff where they are? This is, this is the point. When somebody come at you, I'm so not worried about your age. I am not looking to know if you're a mother, a father, a child, because in this moment, I'm not trying to protect myself. So at the end of the day, if we all gonna look at something, let's look at something from a very realistic view. Let's look at what we deal with on a daily basis, tired of the torture. Where is the action? So the expectation is, is I have a program, I'm sure, when, when I heard you said, sister, so I'm gonna come and I'm gonna give you the information that's needed. And do you know anybody else that needs this information? Because here's this information for them too. I need you to meet people where they are. And that's not taking anything anybody's doing. That's asking Sean and the light on it. I'm just saying, you just need.
That's not his app, right? And she gonna tell y'all where she at? She does. Hold on, can I just also say, Dawn, as everybody is here with attendance, can you just send them the B C B C booklet? Because that'll also show other programs inside of the books that we've collected that also offer mentorship. It's a booklet. It's about seventy pages, but it'll tell you at least most of the community-based organizations that are in the area. It's just like a, write that up in the institution for everybody to all go with.
I mean, I'm working with the Office of Home Services and, um, the experience has been refreshing. I've gotten to speak to so many people in the various communities, um, people that I can relate to, people that I can't relate to, people that I'm learning from. It's just amazing. But the thing is, the best thing I'm doing is it provokes thought. It provokes my mind, not only to where my personal situations are, but where the situations are of others. Within the Office of Home Services, we, we address issues of homelessness and preventive homelessness services for individuals as well as being with all ages. And today we have to talk on this, the topic of the youth. And when I look at it, how many, how limited we are, right? Your services to address the needs of the youth who are experiencing homelessness. Homelessness is a big part of carjacking. It's a big part of crime. It's a big part of that. These are just instances that we need to take a look at and try to drill down and find out where did this start, you know? So just for, just for your knowledge, as far as our office and supportive services, we have a text. We went old school. You know, we said, can you something, say something? We went old school. We established a tech service. It's, um, eight-five-five, one-one. If you see something, you see somebody homeless, you see somebody in need. If you text eight-five-one-one, it goes to a live responder who will then go out to that location to address that situation. You don't have to give anything because remember, it's a text. You don't have to give your name, your information, nothing. You're just texting anonymously. You're just saying, this is what I saw. We, we partner with, um, Newark PD. We partner with Rockets. We partner, we partner with Southern counties within Essex County just to identify people who are suffering like this. Down at One Ten Williams, you can come down, you can get assistance with rental arrears. We provide a program to leave with assistance. We go to court with you. We get free birth certificates for people who were born in Newark. We give guidance on credit care. We address issues that people are trying to transition into sustainable housing and need assistance with a security deposit. All these things we have to serve you according, of course, to eligibility. But many, many people think that they don't even qualify. They do it. We have, um, God, Mayor Rock is going crazy to really address homelessness right now. Like, we, we now have a partnership with Newark Housing Authority and wish we repair a six-billion-dollar bond to repair two hundred units in Newark Housing Authority. Please do this, especially, especially for people who are homeless, right? Transitioning them to, into sustainable housing. But the thing is, is that we're not only transitioning them, but we're giving them wraparound services. Will you get back, right? Because we want that to be able to sustain long-term. Putting somebody that's on the streets into an apartment and teaching them how to live and how to sustain living a healthy life, that's part of taking crime off of the streets. That's part of the partnership with Newark Police Department. That's part of the partnerships with homeowners and business owners in Newark. We also have two hundred vouchers to support people who have substance abuse. We are giving them wraparound services and giving them apartments also so that they can know what it looks like to feel whole again. In addition to that, we are like assisting people who have a sixty percent AMI. We have a twelve-month program that can assist them with a leg up or a rental assistance. So that's where they're working class, that, that middle class that never gets anything, you know what I mean? That they're experiencing homelessness. People think that they're the face of homelessness. There's no face here to homelessness. Like, people talk, you could be sitting here right now and you don't know where I'm going home to. You don't know if I have a home to go home to. You take it for granted because I'm sitting here with a blazer on that I have a place to put a kid to, and that may not be the situation. Mental illness is real. You know, we are one of the very, very few states that actually has in our outreach program clinical people riding around. We have a psychiatrist that is part of our bed that sits at Penn Station three times a week to address people in real time. Like, there are a lot of great things going on everywhere that we have to sit here and talk about the negative thing.